Call the Broken Arrow City Council meeting to order. We have invocation by Pastor Rich Meganaro.
Thank you. If you can bury your heads for a word of prayer. Father God, I come before you on behalf of our city leaders and those in positions of authority. That your Spirit of wisdom and understanding would rest upon them. May their questions have answers. May their challenges have victories. May their obstacles they face be resolved. May our city have your favor and blessing. Please give our leaders a spirit of unity. Help them tune into your voice, a voice of reason, a voice of peace, a voice of understanding, a voice of strength and courage to lead and make good solid decisions for Broken Arrow. May your hand of protection, health, prosperity be upon our leaders, especially our city councillors, so that they govern the people with integrity and hope. And I thank you for our city government. May the leaders of BA look to you, realize your shoulders can handle any problem, any weight, because you're a wonderful councillor, mighty God, great Father, Prince of Peace. In the name of your Son, the greatest example of a leader there ever was and ever will be. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Be blessed.
All right. Roll call.
Pickle.
Here.
Green.
Ford.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Limpy.
Here. Please stand and join councillor Pickle for the pledge of allegiance.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. We're pulling item X on the consent agenda to table for the next meeting. Are there any other items to be removed?
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Minus X.
I'll second it. You make the motion.
Click to other.
We have a motion and a second roll call.
It seems to be running a little slow tonight.
All righty. Item 7 is public hearings.
You want a table next to you?
Yeah.
You need the table? Oh, you said table. I'm going to pull it off.
Item X will be on next council meeting's agenda. Item 7 is public hearings, appeals, presentations, recognitions and awards. 7A, presentation and possible approval of a certificate of recognition for David Hurd for his patriotic act of service for the city of Broken Arrow. Michael Spurgeon.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, good evening. On the agenda tonight, we had an opportunity to recognize a city employee that without question, when I convey what actions he took, clearly went above and beyond in the, his duties as a city employee. And I think that his, what I would call going above and beyond reflects great credit not only upon himself, but also this organization and our city for the type of individuals that are out there each and every day. So I'd like to read the RFA, the Request for Council Action, says, "While on duty on Wednesday, March 5, 2025, David Hurd noticed an American flag laying in a driveway. He noticed that the flagpole was broken and took the flag to the front door of the residence." Mr. Hurd's patriotism does not go unnoticed by the homeowner, the city council or administration, nor does his act of going above and beyond as a city employee. So we have that video that I'd like to show up. I can, Mayor. Okay.
My name is David Hurd. I've been with the city of Broken Arrow for nine years. I'm in the street in the Stormwater Department, and currently I'm operating this street sweeper. That's been my job for the last couple of years. We've got lots of new neighborhoods popping up, a lot of them on the south side of town. So we're adding those to my, to my daily routine, you know. Well, I was just sweeping through the neighborhood, and as I stopped, I was making some notes on where I had been and looked in the mirror, and I saw a flag on the ground. So I thought, well, I'll drive over and see what was going on with it. The wind was pretty heavy that day and had obviously taken it down.
Hello, my name is David. I'm with the city of Broken Arrow. I run a street sweeper. Was going through your neighborhood, and I saw that your flag had come off your flagpole outside. I'm just going to roll it up and stand here in the corner. Maybe you'll have a chance to secure it later. Have a good day.
Well, the flag means a lot to me. I did not have the privilege of serving in the military, but I have a lot of relatives and friends that did. And so I'm a patriotic guy. I just wanted to get the flag off the ground. It didn't need to belong there. It didn't, it didn't belong there. It didn't need to be there. So I wanted to pick it up, make sure the homeowner came home and could find it.
Unfortunately, the homeowner couldn't be with her, with us this evening. But if I can have permission, Mayor, I would like for Mr. Schwab and I and Mr. Hurd to come forward so we can present him with this certificate of recognition.
Absolutely.
Okay. Congratulations. So I'm going to read this on behalf of Mr. Schwab myself. Certificate of recognition in honor of David Hurd. While on duty on Wednesday, March 5, 2025, David noticed an American flag laying in the driveway. He also observed that the flagpole was broken. Without hesitation, he took the personal initiative to pick up the flag and take it to the front door of the residence to advise the owners the flag had fallen. David's heroist, excuse me, David's patriotism and selflessness deserves, does not go unnoticed by the homeowner, the city council or the administration, nor does his act of going above and beyond as a city employee. Thank you for going above and beyond to help keep Broken Arrow a great place to live. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, David. Thank you very much. David, we also, the city council would like to give you a challenge coin on behalf of our city council. Thank you very much for everything that you do. We really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, David. Number I.
Sometimes just small acts of kindness are, need to be addressed and pointed out publicly.
I think it's the things that people do when nobody's watching that is so impressive. So definitely, thank you so much.
Thank you for this opportunity to recognize him.
All right. Item B is approval of and authorization to execute Resolution 1641, approving and authorizing a resolution recognizing and supporting the motivational me PAC the Purpose Community Initiative. So last week, let me pull this up, or last month, Tulsa, or the Attorney General Drummond had started an initiative to help create awareness for human trafficking and online predators and just things that we feel secure, like we feel like that doesn't happen in our city. It doesn't happen, you know, oh, surely that doesn't happen in our state, and it's happening all over the place. And so they, I was approached to have, have us as a city create a resolution that would show our support in our fight against human trafficking and online predators and all of, all of those things that people, like, we just tend to not think about on a daily basis, but it's going on all around us. And I'm trying to pull this up, but it's, it's loading slowly. So I was just, I was excited and honored to be able to be a city. It's one of the first cities. I know Jeek's is going to do it as well. And I brought it to Michael Spurgeon, and he said, absolutely, let's take a look at what, what they have to offer and see how we can make it into a resolution. And so I just wanted to make sure that we shared that.
Well, I would like to have council consider passing it, and then I would like for our public safety folks, as well as the administration, to reach out to find how we can be involved. There are things that go on that we never hear about. I mean, we hired our first full-time domestic violence coordinator last year, and council knows because of the updates that we get, is that that is actually helping many of those that are in, in need, whatever they need in terms of services, a temporary place to live, relocation and so forth. We've also implemented our mental health initiative with the police and fire. And so to me, this is just part of our ongoing efforts to serve those residents in our city that, that have some type of distress or situation. And I think there just needs to be more awareness to this out there. And I'm appreciative of the Attorney General doing that, because only sometimes in order for something like this to take hold, you have to bring awareness to what's happening. And I think he's trying to do that, and I believe Broken Arrow should be a part of it.
And it's proactive measures. We are looking to do a summit, just like Tulsa did. NSU has offered their, their facilities for us to put on a summit, and they'll bring in specialists to speak on each subject. So we'll, I think we're looking in May to hold that. So there'll be more information for that.
I'll make a motion to approve and authorize to execute Resolution Number 1641.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second roll call. Okay. Thank you, guys. Item nine, or 7C, sorry, update on the 2026 general obligation bond package.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, just, just real quick, just have two items. Lots of activities going on mainly in the engineering construction department. We, soon, there could be one day that's dedicated for the user groups to have an opportunity. The engineering department, a special projects manager is out there making sure they're prioritizing and reprioritizing, obviously, because there are more requests, there are going to be more requests than there is funds available. So it's very important that they refine those, those requests. So that's, that's happening, and I'm very excited about, about presenting those to you. I did want to mention to you is that as a part of this initiative, there's going to be four letters that are going to go out from the city manager's office to our citizens through the utility bills. And that first one's going to go out probably sometime in the middle of next month. And this Friday or early next week, the council's going to see a draft of, of that letter. And what it's going to be doing is it's going to be providing some updates on where we are in the process. This is just going to be a general overview of where we are on the 2018 bond. And I'm very proud to say that based on the information that I've received from, from staff, there were 88 projects in the 2018 bond package, and 75% of those projects have either been completed or in the process of construction happening in some phase of that cycle. So that's amazing, just after less than seven years. And obviously, we have a number of projects to go. So we're just going to be a quick update on, on that, as well as talk about some of the things we've done so far. And that will go out in April. Then there'll be a letter that will go out in July that will actually, by then, we will have the dates for the public forum. So there'll be an update on the action that council takes in June. Then we'll have the dates picked out around Labor Day for the public forums, where they're going to be. That's going to be the focus of that second letter. The third letter, and I'll talk about these each time that get ready to go out, the third letter will actually be what happened at the public forums and where council is and what they're about to do in terms of selecting the final projects. Then in January, early February, there'll be a letter going, is that, hey, it's time to, here's what the final package is. And obviously, the council members are going to have additional communications they're going to be doing, mostly way by video, as well as going into public education forum and when we get to that. But really, this is just to let you know, that draft is about finished, and I'm going to send it out to you very soon by way of Lori Hill. And the second thing is the park survey is out, and it should be turned around in just a week or 10 days or so. And we're very excited about the results, that we get a lot of great participation. That's going to be a very important one, because there are a number of very exciting projects that are going to be in there. And we'll get those results back to you. And then, like I said, I think there'll be a couple of other surveys. And the last thing I want to mention is, is next week, the council's going to be having some discussions and learning about the possible partnership as a part of the proposition with the, with the Tulsa City County Library for the South, for the South Broken Arrow Library. So give you an idea about what that could look like. So when you're considering all the projects in June, you'll have the background about why it's important that we upgrade that, that library when you see the statistics and you learn about how much use the library's actually having. So that's all I have to say. Just a lot of behind the scenes work, and it's all leading up to the city council doing a lot of heavy lifting in the, in the month, in the months of June and early July.
Thank you, sir. Item A is citizens' opportunity to address the council. There is none. And nine, item nine is general council business. Item A, we are going to table until after beta. So let's see. Item nine B, consideration, discussion and possible approval of and authorization to execute Resolution 1636. Kenny Schwab.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, councilors, and Mr. Spurgeon. My name is Kenny Schwab. I'm the Assistant City Manager of Operations. And I have Mr. Tim Robbins here with me, our utilities director. If you'll recall, on March the 4th, Mr. Robbins made a presentation about three bills that are making it through in our general session at the Capitol this year. Two on the Senate side, one on the House. Senate Bill 003, Senate Bill 268, and then House Bill 1726. All three of those have to do with biosolids, sewer sludge, and really, they've tied it to some chemicals of concern at the EPA level, Environmental Protection Agency. And those chemicals of concern have been addressed, if you will, or in the process of being addressed on the drinking water side. And at the wastewater side, it's kind of been kicked down to the state or the municipality level and the state level right now. So, and Tim made that presentation. What I want to do is kind of update you, and then we'll read the resolution with your permission, Mayor. So just on an update, on March the 6th, Tim and I actually attended the Senate Committee Hearing in Energy Committee, and that's where the House Bill 003 was presented. Quite a bit of discussion back and forth on it. At the end of the day, they, I guess they called it strict, struck the title, striking the title. It can still be heard on the Senate floor by, through March the 27th. So they can still discuss it, debate it, send it back in and do whatever they need to do to still work on that bill. But it still has legs and it's still moving. That bill is a total ban of land application. When you come to biosolid sewer sludge at a wastewater treatment plant, there's basically only three ways. Once you have treated it, it's treated. It is not raw sewage. It's treated. This is the byproduct of the treatment process. There's only three ways to really get rid of it right now, three effective ways. Incineration. The only incineration plant is in Tulsa, and they are not accepting biosolids because it's too wet. It's not just complete solids. There's a lot of liquid still in it. So they do not accept it. It will not work in that incineration process. So that's off the table. There's only two. Land application or landfill. If the total ban takes the land application off, then there's only one way to address it, and it is to take it to landfills. So on March the 13th, 11 communities actually went to Oklahoma City and met with the State Department of Environmental Quality. These 11 cities basically represented about 2 million people of the state population. So you almost have 50% of the people in the state of Oklahoma represented by these 11 communities. Two, two and a half hour discussion with the state and the different communities discussing the impacts. In general, just a quick overview, there's about six impacts that it would cause every municipality, whether you are a couple hundred or whether you're 700,000, say, like Oklahoma City. A misaligned focus. The focus really should be on the entities that are producing the product, which would be at the manufacturing level where the products are being sold, manufactured, not at the end user, which is a municipal plant. It's actually called passive receiver. We are catching all the chemicals. They should be at the front end where you're addressing it. Inadequate timeline. The bill right now actually states that it would become effective immediately, and by September of 2025, i.e. this September, we must reduce 25% of our production that would be taken to the landfill. And then each year, it increases. That timeline doesn't allow anybody a time to think about it, to put in the processes that they might need to address it, and it doesn't allow a schedule to put it into your budget. Obviously, the funding constraints, capital, it's going to cost more to address it, operational. For us alone, our gas at the Hakee Creek that we share with Tulsa, RMUA side, would be a million dollars more a year just to address the operations of it. A couple others, there are diminished beneficial uses. Right now, you can actually turn it into compost. You can actually land apply, and it can be an agricultural benefit. It can actually help in the forest, addressing activities in forests. There are commercial benefits and private benefits to land use. Two other things, landfill limitations. If you're now taking liquid, somewhat of a liquid sludge into a landfill, you're actually creating the landfill potential safety issue, because the issue there is sheer capacity. You can make a liquid form of landfill, and now it has problems. It's like a jello, if you will. It's now unstable. They have concerns about that. Plus, there's additional costs there that can actually increase and press more of the liquids out at the landfill. And then the biggest thing in landfill is capacity. Oklahoma City alone produces 400 tons a day to go to the land, that would go to the landfill. By comparison, city of Broken Arrow produces 8,000 tons a year. So Oklahoma City, in 20 days, that's what we do in the entire year. That's a lot that we've been going to landfills, so capacities are going to actually diminish. And then lastly, there are concerns about legal challenges, a statewide ban. You're now putting a ban on other property owners' rights, so there's a concern there. So that's kind of the general consensus of what came out of the meeting on March the 13th with the state and the other leading municipalities. I'd be happy to answer any questions. If you would like, Tim Robbins is here, and he can read the resolution on the council's behalf, if you would like.
I kind of want him to read it. Just kidding, you do not have to read it. Do you have any questions or discussion?
As you read it.
Tim's going to read it.
He's going to read it.
Okay.
There's words in there Kenny can't pronounce.
Kenny, Kenny just wants Tim to try to pronounce these words. That's what we're doing here.
Probably be our questions, but go ahead.
Absolutely. Go ahead. Would you like me to read it first or go through your questions?
Read it first. I'll have a question.
All right. So this is Resolution Number 1636, a resolution of the Broken Arrow City Council regarding proposed state mandated restrictions of municipal sewer sludge or biosolids disposal and the city of Broken Arrow's opposition to the passing of Oklahoma Senate Bills SB 03 and SB 268, as well as Oklahoma House Bill 1726. Whereas, the city of Broken Arrow and Broken Arrow Municipal Authority, its public trust is committed to protecting the health, safety and welfare of its residents and those of the state of Oklahoma. And whereas, the city of Broken Arrow solely owns and operates the Lynn Lane Wastewater Treatment Plant and jointly owns and operates the Hakee Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant in conjunction with the Regional Metropolitan Utility Authority. And whereas, the city of Broken Arrow uses and implements effective and efficient sewer sludge and biosolids management techniques that comply with all federal, state and local rules and regulations. And whereas, these sewer sludge and biosolids management techniques are more specifically include land application and disposal of treated product at a landfill. And whereas, the land application of treated waste byproduct of municipal wastewater treatment operations has been a federally accepted and state-approved, safe and cost-effective option since treatment of wastewater operations commenced. And whereas, the chemicals known as PFOS or perfluorooctane sulfonate and PFOA, perfluorane octinate acid, collectively and incorrectly referred to as forever chemicals, are synthetic substances that have gained widespread attention due to their common place in the environment, their persistence against degradation and their potential health impacts. And whereas, the Environmental Protection Agency has issued guidelines for PFOS and PFOA regarding drinking water, but has only recently released a draft risk assessment for their presence in wastewater sewer sludge and biosolids, thereby leaving state governments to individually determine appropriate regulatory actions. And whereas, states are generally adopting three main approaches regulating PFOS and PFOA in sewer, sludge and biosolids management, more specifically including, first, non-scientific emotionally-based approaches based on public opinion, such as total bans on land application. Second, scientific restrictions-based approaches that seek to set certain specific chemical composition limitations on products supported by scientific evidence. And third, a scientific producer-based that seeks to regulate the amount that can be released into a sanitary sewer collection system at the point of discharge to the system. And whereas, Senate Bill 03 proposes a total ban on land application of any sewage, sludge and biosolid material, Senate Bill 268 prohibits the application of and sale of such materials, and House Bill 1726 focuses on prohibiting the land application, spreading, sale and distribution of biosolids and certain materials containing sewer sludge. And whereas, the passage of these bills would immediately create statewide hardships and resulting in the following. First, funding shortfalls due to increased capital and operational costs for each municipality utility provider. Second, potential landfall capacity available and sustainability impacts. Third, elimination of beneficial uses generating from treated waste product. Fourth, elimination of other viable alternatives thereby inducing market instability. And fifth, infringement upon property owner rights therefore creating unnecessary, unnecessary legal challenges and unintended consequences to the residents of Broken Arrow as well as other Oklahomans. And whereas, the city of Broken Arrow supports the scientific-based approaches to managing PFOS and PFOA in sewer, sludge and biosolids, emphasizing the need to apply peer-reviewed scientific evidence in the decision-making process to develop statutes and regulations. And whereas, the proposed bills are presented, as presented, are seen as misdirected in focus, premature in nature, based on emotional concerns and not scientific evidence, and are contrary to current federal or state proper authorities' understandings and position regarding this subject matter. And now, therefore, it be resolved by the city, city council of Broken Arrow, Oklahoma as follows. Formally opposes the passage of Oklahoma Senate Bill 03, Oklahoma Senate Bill 268 and Oklahoma House Bill 1726. Urges the Oklahoma State Legislature to reconsider these identified bills and work collaboratively with Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality and local governments to develop more based, balanced and effective waste management regulations that are based upon a more comprehensive and scientific-based understanding. Directs the city manager to communicate this resolution to the appropriate state legislators and other stakeholders. Encourages residents and local businesses to express their concerns regarding these bills to their appropriate state elected officials.
Good job.
Nice job, Mr. Robbins.
So glad I did not have to read that.
Me too.
I'm going to take a drink of water for you.
You know, that's not just a city problem or a state problem. It's certainly a national problem, as we run into that this last week in Washington, DC. Sitting on several meetings with the different states debating it. Of course, I think the simple solution, as you say, is to stop it before, you know what I mean, when it comes out, because it is getting worse. It gets into the drinking water system. I'm not saying it's in our water, certain regulations, but if it goes back into the river, say, it goes back into the Arkansas River, it's going to end up in Arkansas-Mississippi River on down into the Gulf. So it's a tremendous problem. Right now, as far as, I could tell from the meeting, they're kind of waiting to see what's the EPA, you know what I mean, is going to, they think they know what they're going to do with it, but sometimes political arms get involved with it, so we don't, we don't know exactly what's going to happen. But I'm certainly in agreement with your resolution, and you did do a good job of reading all of that. And you know, there's several, there's a couple more Ps besides those two Ps. There's actually four of them.
Seeing none.
I'll make the motion to authorize and execute Resolution Number 1636.
Second it.
We have a motion and a second roll call. Maybe you can just walk back up here and it'll start again.
Did you pay your computer bill this week?
I did not. You think that's good?
Yep.
Okay. All right, Item 9C, consideration discussion and possible approval of an authorization to execute a professional consultant agreement with Myers Cherry Construction for the construction management services of the jail expansion and renovation. Shannon, you were standing so patiently while Tim was reading that resolution.
I should've sat down, I'm out of breath, and I didn't even read it. Hello, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, and Mr. Spurgeon. My name is Shannon Marshall, I'm Special Projects Division Manager. Before you today is a construction manager contract with Myers Cherry Construction. We have worked on an RFQ selection process and have selected their team to help provide construction management services for the 2018 GOBON-funded project to expand and renovate the jail. This project has some unique aspects, being that the jail administration would like to remain operational for the majority of construction, and with that type of facility requiring security and people are there 24 hours a day, we needed to bring on a partner early on to help with scheduling efforts, as there might be a case where they might, our jail staff might need to coordinate with Tulsa County Jail for a short duration as we upgrade the security system and make some changes there, and they might need to take potential inmates to there for a short time. So bringing on a construction manager early on in the design process is a great benefit by going about a construction manager route. This contract today is only for $15,000 to help perform pre-construction services, providing a schedule early on while we're still in design, providing cost estimates that are true to the market value, and those will help us make good decisions before the project goes out to bid. They will then host the bid and provide the design documents out to subcontractors to do public bidding, just like any competitive state law requires. Once we receive the bids from the subcontractors, we would amend this project, or sorry, amend this contract for a guaranteed maximum price or a GMP. This is a similar contract, we've done this twice before, to the Events Park Infrastructure with Crossland Heavy, as you guys are familiar, for the amphitheater, and also for the Arts at 302 Project. So we've done it twice before. City staff is recommending to go about the construction manager method for construction deliverability with Myers Cherry Construction, and I'm here if you have any questions.
I guess my question is, as a past employee of the police department, and we did the training center, and then we also did the jail, and we did the HVAC, and of course it was low bid, but it seemed like my whole career, there was always problems with the HVAC, probably because it was the low bid. So how can we protect, how can we protect ourselves that we don't have to take the low bid, we just want it to be working? Because I don't know that it ever really worked correctly the whole time I was there, at either the jail or the training center.
Well, I know, A, we are addressing HVAC at the jail as part of this project, so that'll be upgraded, and then B, in regards to what we can and cannot award, that is a state law on what we can award, and it's lowest and responsible bidder, so if the lowest bidder we know is irresponsible in some manner, then we can choose to reject that bid and go to the next one, but it would be lowest and responsible. So there isn't, we can't just pick, you know, our favorite or anything like that, but we do have potential avenues in order to select the most qualified bidder, or the best qualified, lowest and responsible bidder.
I guess maybe that's what I'm asking, is there, like, should we, as the city, make our requirements higher, so if it doesn't work, it doesn't, it falls back on them and not on the city to try to figure it out?
So there are warranty periods, we can definitely extend the warranty periods for both materials and their labor to help cover some of those costs and potential damages. Yeah, I think that's probably the best way to go about it. I could definitely look into it some more and provide you additional answers.
Counselor Ford, if I may, with these type of projects, we do require bonding, we have payment, performance, and maintenance bonds, so that does give us, you know, basically a warranty on that. Also, working with the manager at risk, you know, we can make sure that we are telling them of all of our concerns and that this is something that we're gonna look at very carefully and closely. And as was mentioned, it isn't just the lowest, it's the lowest responsible, so we have the ability to vet the contractors, make sure that we're gonna get a high-quality product.
Okay, I really appreciate that, because...
And it might come down to the actual system. We can work with the design engineer to make sure the system is, A, designed well and suitable for the needs that it would be applicable to, so you're not just running hot over here and running cold over there, that it's designed to be appropriate on both areas.
I might say that last week, the U City Council toured the jail, and the person in charge there gave them a really great tour as I went through it with them, and that was the first thing she mentioned, is that we are so excited, and she started listing some of the things that they were gonna be getting and that they really needed, so they are very excited about it. And it was good for the youth to see the jail, how they operate, and how secure it is, so that was good also, so they're ready for you to start anytime.
Yes, they, the staff there has been amazing to work with in collaboration for this project, and you are correct, it does need some improvements.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve this as staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mayor, I may be able to...
You didn't pay it.
Put your vote in.
You did.
I can.
You can, yes.
I assume it's a yes vote.
Yes. While Dustin's fixing my computer. Item 9D, consideration discussion and possible approval of reappointment of Bob Gorison to the City of Broken Arrow Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire May 1st, 2028. Rocky?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Rocky Hinkle, Community Development Director. Planning Commission members are appointed to serve three-year terms. Currently, Commissioner Mr. Robert Gorison was appointed to fill the remainder of an unexpired, unexpired term to expire May 1st, 2022. Mr. Gorison was nominated for reappointment by Mayor Wimpy and has expressed his willingness to serve on the Planning Commission for another three-year term to expire May 1st, 2028. Staff recommends you approve the appointment of Mr. Gorison to serve the remainder of a three-year term on the Planning Commission to expire May 1st, 2028.
You know, Bob, Robert does a good job on that Planning Commission, excellent job. He has a great background, he does talk quite a bit, he asks quite a few questions. I know he's listened to this.
I know. That's what we were gonna say.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna restrict his number of questions, but what you need to remember is every question he asks is important and good, and you learn from it.
He is very valuable.
So he is very valuable, and I'll make a motion that we do reappoint him for this time period to 28.
I'd be honored to second that. Good appointment, Mayor.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second.
I'll second.
And a second. Roll call. Thank you. And 9F, consideration discussion and possible approval of PR 596-2023, PT 1987-2025, conditional final plat for Three Oaks. Rocky?
This conditional final plat for Three Oaks proposes to have 41 lots on 12.34 acres. This property is located approximately 1/8 mile north of East Washington Street and approximately 1/4 mile east of 23rd Street. It is currently zoned RS4 for residential single-family. Just to walk you through the history of this project, on November 21st, 2023, a comp plan change was approved from Level 6 to Level 3. On June 27th, 2024, the preliminary plat was approved by the Planning Commission. On July 15th, 2024, the rezoning from Ag to RS4 and PUD 1503-2024 was approved, and the conditional final plat was approved by the Planning Commission on February 27th, 2025. Staff recommends you approve the conditional plat.
Any discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I make a motion we approve it as staff's recommendation.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call. Item 9G, consideration discussion and possible approval of 1942-2024, PR 627-2024, conditional plat for Timber Ridge Residential. Rocky?
This conditional final plat for Timber Ridge Residential proposes to have 141 lots on approximately 35.3 acres. This property, which is located south and west of, southwest corner of Albany and 37th Street, has been approved for rezoning from Ag to RS4, and the PUD 3334 was also approved. If you remember, at the last council meeting on February 25th, there was some discussion about connectivity issues because of the developer to the, to the west of this development. Since that meeting, the engineers for this development, Timber Ridge, and the other engineers for the other development, we were able to sit down and meet with them, and they were able to provide some connectivity represented in the plat. They were able to work out some of those connectivity issues, so staff recommends that you approve this conditional final plat.
I appreciate staff working that through so quickly, that's good.
I'll make a motion to approve 25-363.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call. Item 9H, consideration discussion and possible approval of PUD 1983-2025 for Ben Tree Lift Station. Rocky?
PUD 1983-2025 involves approximately 9.6 acres platted, which is currently, which is currently unplatted. The property is located approximately 1 mile east of 23rd Street, south of Albany Street. PUD 1983-2025 is requested to facilitate the development of a City of Broken Arrow sanitary sewer lift station on the south portion of the property. The north parcel, Development Area A, is to remain zoned agricultural and be used as permitted by the zoning ordinance. PUD 1983-2025 is proposed to be developed in accordance with Ag 1 District of the zoning ordinance, except as specified below. Development Area B, access to this property shall be through a 25-foot-wide mutual access agreement between the City of Broken Arrow and the owner of Lot 21, Block 1 of the Ben Tree subdivision. At the Planning Commission meeting, there were a couple of residents who had questions about noise and ordinance, but no real concerns. I believe somebody from engineering is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
So the residents that had concerns about noise, you said, we were able to let them know that it...
Yes, so originally, they thought the lift station was gonna be closer to the backyard, and so we were able to demonstrate that it's actually gonna be closer to the creek, so noise wouldn't be a factor.
So they were satisfied with that?
Yep, and it'll have an opaque fence surrounding it as well.
This is a large area, too, for a lift station.
I believe it's for future development. Return. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Mr. Spurgeon. So Engineering Construction's technically the applicant in this situation. This property aligns with some of our future planning and master planning for where a regional lift station might go. It was available, we decided to take the opportunity to try to acquire it, working with community development. Due to its location, it didn't have any access, and so we went through the PUD process just to give it access to the property, because we were, we didn't wanna build a bridge or whatever across the creek, so we worked out that access with a mutual access agreement with the neighbor, like you said. They've already given us the mutual access agreement, so we do have access to the property. It'd be very rare we use that access, it'd be a maintenance-type situation. A lot of neighbors did show up with, I wouldn't so much say complaining, but just kind of unease of not knowing what we were doing. I think most of them left pretty happy, just understanding, A, we have no design plans to build a lift station there today, you know, this is probably a very future thing, we just wanted to secure the property so we had the option to in the future. B, like I said, if we do put a lift station on the property, it would go as close to the creek as possible, which, I shouldn't say as close, but it'd likely be closer to the creek than to the residences, which they were happy to hear, you know, we're not putting it up against their backyards. We would landscape and do screening in accordance with what zoning would call for, very little noise, so those are a lot of their concerns, but we had no design to show them today or anything, it's just not planned right now.
Well, that explains why I was wondering why a large piece of property, you know what I mean, I thought, boy, that's gonna be a large lift station.
It'll be a regional lift station, but I think we anticipate only securing about an acre or so in the fence area, the rest of it would just stay landscaped. And we did tell the neighbors that, because they were worried, well, what's gonna be behind my house, I like having a grass space, and it was like, well, if somebody else buys it and develops it, it could be anything. Us buying, developing it, and only using it an acre, we're pretty much guaranteeing that grass stays there.
Right.
So as long as we, as long as we're the owner, so...
Yep. We only have control of that if you own it.
I'll make a motion to approve PUD 001983-2025.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call. Thanks, Rocky. Item 9I, consideration discussion and possible direction on securing lobbying services for the City of Broken Arrow for state and federal legislative matters. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening again, Mayor, Members of Council. I would like to talk to you about reestablishing lobbying or intergovernment relations services, and then I have, I have a request. So, as all of you know, because each one of you is really engaged in terms of going to Oklahoma City and advocating, which is an incredible responsibility and one that I know all of you enjoy, whether it's at the state or the federal level, one of the things that each, when each of you came into office, you talked about wanting to try to develop a relationship with our partners at both the state and level, state and federal level, because that's, that's important on behalf of the residents. Tonight, I wanted to visit with you about re-engaging lobbyist services. As you know, several years ago, we, we had a contract lobbyist, and I'd like to talk to you about either re-establishing that contract lobbyist, or through an intergovernment relations-type contractor, maybe even in a full-time employee to be able to do that, and I'm wide open to those discussions. The reason I would like to discuss this with you really is, I think with the size of our city, the public matters that we're discussing on a regular basis, we need to have someone that's advocating on our behalf at both the state and the federal level. And I think it's important for a handful of reasons, but if I could boil it down, I think it would probably be four. The first one is, we need someone there that is at the Capitol, or capitals, I should say, on a regular basis, representing the council's interests, that are the community's interests, because the council's interests are the community's interests. Secondly, and this is the part of the lobbying services, is influencing policy. Having someone there to know, like, tonight we took a resolution, I would envision, I'll give an example, in this particular case, it says in the resolution that the city manager will send this out, if we had a lobbyist or an intergovernmental relations person, I'd meet with them, and then I would have them actually send it out, and then make appointments with the author of that bill or bills in the House and the Senate, try to get in with the leadership or the staff of the leadership to talk about the concerns. Kenny Schwab would probably go with them, Tim Robbins, and sit down and try to have that engagement, council member could go, if they're available, to let them know the concerns that this presents to, to the, to the City of Broken Arrow. The third would be, obviously, there's opportunities for, for not only grants, but there's opportunities for other funding opportunities and partnerships with the state and federal level for projects like the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, our surface transportation programs, the RACE grant that we received. Having someone that is engaged with, with our delegation is extremely important. And also, I would say regulatory compliance, as we talked about earlier, and economic development. I mean, there are, the states aware of individuals that'd like to invest in Oklahoma, and we wanna make sure they... As you know, several years ago, we had a contract lobbyist, and I'd like to talk to And I think it's important for a handful of reasons, but if I could boil it down, I think you about either re-establishing that contract lobbyist or through an intergovernmental relations-type contractor, maybe even a full-time employee to be able to do that, and I'm wide open to those discussions. The reason I would like to discuss this with you really is, I think with the size of our city, the public matters that we're discussing on a regular basis, we need to have someone that's advocating on our behalf at both the state and the federal level. it would probably be four. The first one is, we need someone there that is at the Capitol, or capitals, I should say, on a regular basis, representing the council's interests, or the community's interests, because the council's interests are the community's interests. Secondly, and this is the part of the lobbying services, is influencing policy. Having someone there to know, like tonight, we took a resolution. I would envision, I'll give an example, in this particular case, it says in the resolution that the city manager will send this out, if we had a lobbyist or an intergovernmental relations person, I'd meet with them, and then I would have them actually send it out, and then make appointments with the author of that bill or bills in the House and the Senate, try to get in with the leadership or the staff of the leadership to talk about the concerns. Kenny Schwab would probably go with them, Tim Robbins, and sit down and try to have that engagement. Councilmember could go, if they're available, to let them know the concerns that this presents to the City of Broken Arrow. The third would be, obviously, there's opportunities for not only grants, but there's opportunities for other funding opportunities and partnerships with the state and federal level for projects like the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, our surface transportation programs, the RACE grant that we received. Having someone that is engaged with our delegation is extremely important. And also, I would say regulatory compliance, as we talked about earlier, and economic development. I mean, there are, the state's aware of individuals that like to invest in Oklahoma, and we want to make sure they know the Broken Arrow is open for business. So what I would like, after the council's discussion, my request is, I would like to have a short city council subcommittee made up of two council members that would meet to me to talk about what is the best way to go about providing these services to our city. And then from there, come back with that recommendation to the city council, and they can proceed accordingly with, if it is to do it by way of a contract, then that's something that, obviously, council would give those parameters, and then I would go out and interview with the subcommittee, several individuals. If we wanted to do it by a contract, say, an intergovernmental relations person, we could do that as well. But really, having the council's insight on what they would like to see as a part of this, I think is very important, and I think it's time that we discuss this and you give the administration some direction.
I would agree. I know when I came on in two thousand and seventeen, I had relationships already, just because of my full-time job at the state level and federal level with legislators, and we did have a lobbyist at the time, but it, things have changed since I've gotten elected, where we now have a very active council that does look at those items, but it's, there's a lot. We're also way more active now as far as committees and activity within the community, and even though Counselor Ford and Green serve on the legislative committee with OML, there's still some things that our city isn't like every other city. So there could be policies that OML wants to support, and it's rare, but maybe they're supporting something that we want to go a different direction. So it could be good to have someone that's advocating on our behalf, not just us, which we will still continue to do that, because it's just what we do, but I think it would be great to have someone.
Mayor, I would agree with you, too. There's just so many bills, and to read every single bill and understand how it's going to affect our city. OML, too, they actually have a meeting with the lobbyists of other cities before they even decide how they're going to do it, and that would give us a seat at the table, which we don't have that seat at the table right now. I am in support of this, and I'd love to sit on the committee, too, to pick out the next person, and I think it would be very important, and I just think it would just be kind of icing on the cake, because we do have good relationships with our congressman in DC and our state.
Lisa has a really good relationship with one of the representatives.
You know, I just want to mention on that is that, to me, you know, I've had council member say, if we needed to have a meeting with any of our delegation, whether it's Ross, whether it's John Haster, or we all know Christie, Senator Gillespie, that's not something that's difficult to do. Sometimes you've got to have meetings with the leadership, you have meetings with the author, and, you know, it's clear that there's not a large percentage of legislatures, legislators that have an understanding of how municipal government operations work. The bill that you counsel opposed tonight's perfect case in the point. It doesn't seem to be any regard for what the impact is to municipalities. It's just that, this is the way it needs to be, and you all need to figure it out. Well, this isn't the only bill that the legislature puts forth, and we spend an incredible amount of time doing what they call preemption, which is trying to stop a bill from becoming a law, and there's many, many ways to do that. The other part of this is having a relationship with the chief executive. In this case, for Oklahoma, it's the governor, and getting, having a relationship with the governor's staff, because sometimes the governor wants to know what's going on, and if there isn't someone on the staff that understands municipal government, he may not understand completely what this could do to municipalities. And so I just think having someone that's there and then can tell us where we need to be and when we need to be, because this is happening, I think is extremely important.
And I would like to serve as well, so, go ahead.
I think it is important, because, like, the mayor and I both, we don't mind sitting in those committees, that they're having to look at us and our, to our faces, and after we've already contacted them, it's hard for them to vote against what we want when we're in the room, but we don't always know when to be in that room, and so that's why I think a lobbyist would really help us, too, to know where to be.
I think it would be a good idea. I'm not a lobbyist. You know, I'll go visit with our representatives, and I have before. On my first time on the council, they used to come and meet with us on the federal level. We would have one evening, the Oklahoma Municipal League would have, and they would have dinner there for us, and our representatives are there, representatives' family, our families, if any is with us. We spent the evening in their office area. So it's a time just to sit back and visit about what's important to you and get to know. Now it seems like, and it's nothing against our legislators, but it's difficult to get in to see them, but then when you do get to see them, you feel like you're Russian. Especially this last time, they're in a hurry to go vote and get stuff done, and you feel like you're interfering with them. So I think this last few years, when we did have a representative at the state, and I would really like for it to be at the state and federal level both, to keep us informed what bills that we need to be looking at, who we need to meet, even set up a meeting for us at the convenient time of our senators or representatives. They could do that, or maybe when they're in town, we could have a special time and sit down and visit about three or four different things. So I think that person there does things that we don't have time, at least I don't have time, to do and get done and keep us informed, because good decision-making, you look at everything, all the options, and then you make a decision from there. If you don't have some of those decisions to pick from, you're not going to pick any of them. So I think to have that person in there would be great on both levels.
Yeah, I would say, I would echo, Lisa, in my opinion, hit the nail on the head with having someone at the table, because when we're looking at our strategic plan for Broken Arrow for ten years, twenty years, twenty-five years, we need to have that seat at the table so that what we can be made aware of is going to impact our citizens. Are we in the best position to do that? And so I think it's an excellent idea.
Whose idea was it? Who come up with that idea?
Well, actually, you know, it's interesting. Sometimes everything's about perfect timing. I can tell you, there has been an overwhelming number of bills this session that I try to track. I've had Trevor, all the directors, try to track, and I can tell you, understanding the legislative process and where something is, trying to keep track of when hearings are going to be held, like Counselor Ford said, is sometimes you don't find out when those hearings are. You've got to be looking at the schedule, and it changes. And so having someone that understands the environment is extremely important. So I was thinking about it, and we were having a catch-up lunch, and I said, I've got one more thing to talk about, and she goes, I do, too, and I said it, and she goes, that's exactly what I want to talk to you about. And the mayor called the next day and said, hey, I want to talk to you about this, because, you know, she follows with OML what's going on, what the number of bills were. So it was really, it was a multitude of people. I spoke to Counselor Green. He understands the need, and he wanted me to convey that to you. He couldn't be here tonight because of spring break with his family, but he certainly understands the need, and he wanted me to convey that to the council. So I hear everyone having an interest in doing that, and really, as I've had two council members of any other than you all can decide, but really, I'm hoping the next probably thirty to forty-five days, that we could come up with a process, look to interview a few folks, and then come back with a recommendation to the council.
You do have a lot going on right now, so if it takes two months, it's okay.
Okay. Now, I just would like to get this, actually, you know, the thing about the federal government is, they don't end at the end of May, you know, so I was thinking, try to get it done, like I said, in the next maybe forty-five to sixty days, because obviously, having someone that can get up there, and I've got to put together a whole strategy based on what council decides, I have the plan to include some money into the budget, should council say yes, so we can begin putting together a strategy on how this person would have the resources needed to be where they need to be.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve twenty-five dash three oh-one, to hire lobbyists for the state and federal legislative matters.
I'll second.
The motion is second, and that motion passed.
What about the deciding who's going to be on the...
This is a legislative function, so I need to, and I heard you say, Mayor, and I said, Counselor Ford, if there's anyone else, then you all have to, you know, scissors, rock, paper.
I don't want to be that bad.
I'm really good at that game.
Too good.
I think so. You want to motion that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Deborah and Lisa to that committee to work with the city manager.
I'll be happy to second that.
All right.
Can you do that?
Is that...
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis. Thank you, sir.
Of course. If he votes for you, is it like auto pin?
We don't have an auto, an auto pin. I did. Indeed, I did. Ten, preview ordinances. Ten A, fire protection. Consideration discussion and possible preview of an ordinance amending Chapter Ten, fire prevention and protection. Trevor.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, Mr. Spurgeon. As you know, on July the third and fourth, you can set off fireworks in the City of Broken Arrow between the hours of three PM and eleven PM. The last meeting, the issue that came up was what happens if there's a rainout on July the third, the fourth, and/or both. And so the directive that we received was to create a draft ordinance for your review that would designate the city manager or his designee with the sole power to declare a rainout on either July the third and/or July the fourth, and if that happens, then before July the fifteenth of that same calendar year, would designate a makeup day for the fireworks between the hours of three PM and eleven PM. Happy to answer any questions. If you have any additional feedback or changes that you'd like to have made, please let me know, and we can make those changes, and then we can bring this back for final consideration.
So, well, just real quick, would that be like, if it's projected to be raining on the third and the fourth, you'll make the decision that, and say the third and the fourth is a Monday and a Tuesday, so you'll say the next Saturday is the day, or what is your, what's your process of deciding?
You know, I've given a little bit of thought. I mean, if it's not raining, I mean, if there's been rain, that's good for, obviously, if it stops raining, so it's really probably going to be a case-by-case basis, but I've given some thought, and I would like for that day before the fifteenth to be on a weekend, so that way people could be able to have time to make arrangements, to be able to do it, make sure they understand that it's, even though they had two days, if there's a makeup, it's only going to be one, and people just need to understand. That's, I think, that's a great compromise on the council's part, considering that there are folks in our community that have concerns about fireworks. If rain, I have to look at it, but if rain was absolutely imminent at that time, I'd probably make the call. I mean, I'm not concerned about it, and we'd have to get the word out, especially, I'd go in concert with Chief Arnold and his team, because obviously, then it becomes an enforcement deal if, in fact, there are fireworks being shot off, and so I'd be looking at the forecast and making sure, trying to make, and might make a call early. So really going to come down to watching the weather, probably at least a weekend ahead of time, and then looking at what an alternate would be if necessary.
Further discussion?
You know, I'm still opposed to fireworks, but I'm not opposed to changing the date, so that doesn't hurt anything, so just go on record for that. In fact, I'd make a motion that we accept this July the fifteenth date and have somebody in charge, the city manager in charge. I'd make the motion even.
I'll second it.
Give a motion in a second. Roll call.
See, I'm not all bad.
I just thought you were going to tell us you were going to take a three-week vacation.
I will probably.
Call me when it's over.
Call me when you guys are done.
It wasn't me setting them off.
All right. Item ten B, consideration discussion and possible preview of an ordinance closing a waterline easement on property located one-quarter mile south of Tucson Street and one-half mile west of Elm Place. Rocky, hi again.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. The property owner, Tulsa L Development LLC, has submitted an application requesting the closure of approximately ten feet wide of waterline easement on property located approximately one-quarter mile south of Tucson and one-half mile west of Elm. The property is currently under development as a single-family residential subdivision. Staff recommends you preview the ordinance and set it for adoption.
Any discussion? Your motion?
I guess it's not needed, is that right?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the abandonment of it.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call. Item ten C, consideration discussion and possible preview of ordinance closing and easement from Oakmont Hills on property located one-quarter mile north of Florence Street, east of Ninth Street. Rocky.
Again, the property owner, Oakmont Hills, has submitted an application requesting the closure of a fifteen-foot-wide easement on property located approximately one-quarter mile north of Florence and east Ninth Street. The property is currently in the process of being planted as Oakmont Hills. Staff recommends you preview the ordinance and set it for adoption.
Any discussion?
Make a motion to pass twenty-five dash three-three-three.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call. Item D is emergency clause.
There's no emergency clause.
It's not?
It's another item.
I'm just kidding. It is not an emergency clause. It, okay. Ten D, consideration discussion and possible preview and ordinance closing and easement from Oakmont Hills. Rocky.
Same development, different fifteen-foot easement. Staff recommends you preview the ordinance and set it for adoption.
Can't change your mind now. I make a motion we approve the question.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call. All right, we have no ordinances. Remarks by governing body members. We do have Vietnam Veteran Recognition Day at First United Methodist Church this Thursday at seven PM. The Military History Center, which I serve on their board, does an amazing job of recognizing our Vietnam veterans, which, of course, we all know, did not have a warm welcome home, so I like to remind everyone, whenever you meet or see a Vietnam veteran, is to not just thank them, but say welcome home, because they did not have that. So we'd love for you guys to join us for that. And then Super Mercados is going to put on a Coffee with the Chief on the twenty-ninth of March, so, or Cafe Con El Jefe. So, Super Mercados Mall, yes. Yes, so, anyone else?
Mayor, I had an item also today, as you weren't able to be there, three of us to replace you in this United Way meeting, so David and Lisa and myself sat in and represented the City of Broken Arrow. We did win an award. They invited us, and we knew ahead of time, that's why we went, and it's a pretty prestigious award. We were, as far as I could see, the only city there at the United Way that did win an award, and I was impressed, and I'm going to read you what they said about the City of Broken Arrow. But we won the award as a business, so it was actually their Green Country Business Award, and they were very, very impressed, but let me read this. With an eleven percent increase in total fundraising drive contributions from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four, the City of Broken Arrow demonstrated their deep commitment to our community. They got an early start to their fundraising drive and put together a committee that worked diligently to meet their goals. The committee made giving easy with an online donation center and offered incentives like PTO days. Highlights of the City of Broken Arrow's fundraising drive included exciting events like Bowl-a-thon, basket auctions, and a delicious chili cook-off. These community leaders see the importance of the work of the United Way and our nonprofit partners, and are dedicated to helping improve the lives of our neighbors in need. So I thought it was a very, very nice award. It made me feel really good. I wasn't on that committee. I don't even know if I was involved with the United Way at that time when it was doing it, but I really feel like that we needed the committee, whoever they are, maybe at the next council meeting, present something to our special committee, because this is a big deal. It wasn't like, oh, we're the largest city and we did this or we did that. It was that we really, really put the money in the coffers for them, for the United Way. And if you look at it, and I was sitting there thinking while I was eating the free meal, it probably wasn't free, but we have a lot of nonprofits in Broken Arrow that benefit from them, so I think it's just important that we be involved and benefit our nonprofits. So, anyway, I was excited. You two have a comment about any of it?
Well, there was over nine hundred people in attendance to this luncheon, and you're right, we do have a lot of really good United Way agencies, Broken Arrow neighbors, Broken Arrow seniors, a lot of other ones, those are the ones I serve on, so that came to my mind right at the bat, but I agree, it was really nice to get the recognition, but I felt bad because I didn't do anything, you know? Yes, but I am glad that we're going to recognize the committee that did, put in the actual work, but it was, they highlighted Broken Arrow seniors. Actually, we have a senior choir through our Broken Arrow seniors that actually started us off, and they sang really, really well, and so they did a good job, and then... Actually, we have a senior choir through our, through our Broken Arrow Seniors that actually started us off. And they sang really, really well. And so, they did a good job. And then, Broken Arrow Seniors was mentioned a few times throughout the program, and so was Broken Arrow Neighbors as well. They were involved in a video, a few, a few things. So, we got pretty good recognition today.
All right. David, any comments on it?
Just echoing what, what you both said, it was just very impressive to see what Broken Arrow can do as a, to be, you know, recognized as a business entity that helps the United Way.
Can you have two things?
You can have two, Tim.
Okay, my other thing is that on Saturday evening, Merna and I had been on the trip to Washington DC with the youth. We were pretty tired, but because the mayor's involved with it, we went to the Soldiers' Wish, went to the event on Saturday evening, and it is fantastic. It's fantastic. Especially being a veterinarian, you just felt, a veteran, you just felt like nearly everybody there was veterans, because they appreciated the veterans so much. So, it was really a warm feeling event. And Deborah did a great job in her presentation. You could tell she was very passionate in what she does and in her giving. And there was a lot of people for several blocks, a lot of people. And, and I will say this, there was a lot of staff there and staff's family was there. So, I appreciated that, and I know Deborah did also, but it was an excellent event, I felt like, for the city of Broken Arrow.
You extended it, it was, it was further to the north.
Half block further.
Do you have a total amount yet, how much you raised?
I haven't heard anything yet.
Oh, yeah, no, not yet.
Okay.
Good job.
Yeah, it was, it was packed, for sure.
And we did go to DC. I didn't, I didn't know if Counselor Pickle wanted to share any about his first experiences and his first National League of Cities.
Yeah, so, it, it was so informative and such a pleasure to be able to meet other councillors, mayors, legislators from all over the United States, from California, Oregon, Florida, Arizona, and listen to how they're working in their cities to make them better and exchanging ideas and thoughts and those types of things. And definitely a shout-out to our U City Council that went as well. I was so impressed with their first class in everything that they did. And especially when having conversations with the legislators and things like that, it was, it, it really kind of warms your heart to know this is the future that we have in Broken Arrow and what Broken Arrow is producing. So, definitely made me walk a little bit taller.
Absolutely. Well, and I got to, while I was there, had breakfast at the Swiss Embassy, because our Switzerland female mayors got together for a breakfast. And so, that was really neat to get back together and meet the new ambassador and be in his home, so that was pretty neat, so.
That was a year ago, wasn't it?
Yeah, in May, it'll be a year since I was in Switzerland. All right. Anything else?
Mayor, the staff and I have spoken quite a bit in this meeting, and we've got a few more things to update you, so I'm going to yield my time back to the council.
Okay. We do have an executive session, so we will take a brief recess to go into Bama. Make a motion to go into.
I'll make a motion to do that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Pickle?
Yes.
Green? Ford?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes, here.
Wimpy.
Here. Yes.
They confused me.
We are voting on it, so it's a yes.
Okay, so now we need to do the roll call first.
Yes, now it'll be here.
Now I call the Broken Arrow Municipal Authority Meeting to order a roll call.
Thank you. Pickle?
Here.
Green? Ford?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Wimpy?
Here. Any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All right. We have no public, oh, just kidding. We do. Public hearings, appeals, presentations, recognitions, and awards. Item 5A, presentation of new utility billing and customer portal software named VX Smart by Vertronics One. Say it for me, Tim.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Trustees, General Manager, Mrs. Spurgeon, Timothy Robbins, Utilities Director, once again up here. I am very excited to present this to you finally. This has been a, a journey to get to this moment, to present this to the authority, and I just wanted to publicly thank our staff. Kurt Poole is here with us. He has been a monumental lift on pulling this off, and Aaron McCollough as well. So, I stand on the backs of grates in getting this to you and the public, so. So, this program is the Customer Utility Portal by, it's called VX Smart. It is by Vertronics One. This is, it is a, it's a, an online program that is going to be the front-facing center for our utility billing and also as a customer portal. Instead of just a payment system that we have right now that is paymentous, this will be a whole customer platform that we will be engaged in. So, to get to where we are today, it's important to remember what it took us to get here. And this has been a multi-year investment by the Broken Arrow Municipal Authority into its water system in installing the AMR/AMI meters. These meters are spread throughout town and are for residential and consumer uses and are over 42,000 meters in the ground right now that are comprised of these AMR meters. These meters, kind of showing in this picture, start off at HO of the residents and through this upgrade and the installation of what's called gateways, these 28 gateways throughout town that are located on water towers and signal poles throughout town. These are collecting the, the actual data that's coming from your average water meter, whether that's at a residence or in a commercial situation. And then, it transmits this through cellular signal back to the computer system on servers that is hosted by our system through Neptune 360. And this Neptune 360 program contains all of that information. So, what this has done is it's allowed us to go from a drive-by situation where we have operators, our meter-reading techs, driving by throughout neighborhoods all over town, to a cellular-based collection system. So, instead of getting the data once a month or every 45 days, we get it in 24 hours, which is just huge. So, we talk about the utility dashboard that we've presented, and we've talked about this quite a bit, is Neptune 360, and this is the host of all of that information. So, we're really excited, this is really the, the public's first view of this system here. This is for our internal use only, and you kind of see it has a lot of interesting graphics and a lot of analytics that we use on a daily basis. But the one that we're going to use the most to talk about tonight is the customer inquiry, where it is reading that 24-hour delayed information, your average everyday flows out of your meters. So, this is, this is where all of that is hosted, and it's going to be transitioned out into the platform we're talking about right now, which is the VX Smart Customer Dashboard. So, the main attributes of this is, again, it's replacing our paymentous, payment system and is presenting with a whole new customer dashboard for viewing and paying bills. It gives you the ability to sign up for notifications on the most important part of this, that is leak detection, as well as water meter analytics, which is, which is just huge. It's creating these home water reports that's, we're called here, if you see on this, this dashboard, we talked about before, is the water score, where it takes all of the analytics that Vertronics, Vertex One has generated over its lifespan, over its, its company history, all the analytics throughout, all of its customers, and it's comparing your use and your profile that you're entering in, all your information, and it's going to create an average home user, your user, and compared to an efficient home user. And it's also going to give you your daily usage. So, we can use this dashboard to really effectively manage your home utility usage to try to help with communications and just overall transparency and use for our customers. One of the biggest things that we were really trying to highlight to the public is their ability to track their water. So, this is the, the tracking component for the customer dashboard, where you can see it go to a yearly aspect, you can go to a two-month aspect, down to two weeks, one week, and one-day intervals. And this is really the, the first time that any customer in the state of Oklahoma is able to see their water usage down to an hourly consumption to help troubleshoot their own utility service, which is, I, I, it just is incredible. I get so intrigued and, and just, I love every aspect of this. The other spot that is really critical with being able to see that is we can monitor continuous use for leak detection. There is a lot of consumer stories over the next 30 days that we're going to be pushing out that really highlights the benefit of being able to monitor and see continuous use detection. It's going to help us on the utility side for saving water that doesn't need to go on the ground and help our customers save money on the long run. And through our notification system, it's going to be able to do that. So, other aspects here, we talked about the leak detection wizard, where it's going to be able to help you. You're determined you have a leak, but we're going to give you tools to be able to troubleshoot that leak. There's going to be recommended actions, where it's going to talk to you about water conservation tactics, utility management tactics, and just overall home, homeownership deals that revolve around your utility bills, and as well as helping you estimate your end uses. So, I got to really briefly roll through that. We are going to be having a huge rollout program. Our, overall, our May 5th date is our launch date for this platform and where we'll be transitioning. And to talk about that rollout program, I have Aaron here to walk you through what you're going to be seeing as we come up.
Thank you, Tim. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Trustees, General Manager, Spurgeon, Aaron McCollough, Director of Communications for the city. As Tim mentioned, May 5th is the, is the goal, as far as the rollout is concerned. And we have actually started, Mr. Spurgeon spoke about it earlier today on KRMG, and so we've kind of got that ball rolling, if you will, laid out some breadcrumb trails there for folks as we get a little bit closer, about six weeks down. Tomorrow, Vice Chair, Vice Mayor, Parks, is going to talk with me about it on City Council Rewind. And then, the following day, on Thursday, we're going to have a little bit longer-form article that goes out to the community to let them know exactly what's going on. We're going to take a little bit of a break, and then, once we get into the later part of April, the last two weeks there, we're going to start pumping out information. We're going to have a frequently asked questions, we're going to have a page on the website, we're going to have all kinds of video tutorials. That's some of the things that we're going to be doing between now and then. And then, of course, once we get to May 5th, we will launch, and then, we're going to continue on with some of the great resources that VX Smart has given us. So, really excited. I am one of those people that have already benefited from this, as I found out, I had a water leak, I know you and Ross as well. And so, I think it's going to be a tremendous benefit to the community and to our customers. Happy to answer any questions you have about the rollout and the communication efforts.
Well, I think it's really good timing for May 5th, because that's right before people start filling up the pools and watering the grass and that type of thing, too. So, I, I am really excited about this. Mayor, it's not for roll water for, aren't you on roll water for? It's only for the city of Broken Arrow water. So, unfortunately, you won't know if you have a leak or not.
I won't.
But I am excited for this and I'm excited for the rollout, and I know our citizens, you can sign up and get direct messages that, you know, hey, you, you need to check this out, there's something wrong, or something's up, so.
Well, I want to tie into that, just, in a time where, you know, everything's going up, we're providing our citizens with a tool in order to maybe bring their costs down using the technology that's already there, the data that's already there. And how often is it that you have the city saying, look, we got a tool to save you guys, everyone, money? Let's, you know, let's jump onto that. I did have, you know, and even for myself, from an insurance perspective, you know, people going on vacation, they might be gone for a week or so, and it would be nice to know that they had a, if they had a hose burst on their washer or something like that, that they can get a notification that, hey, you, there's something going on, and they would be able to get in there and, and help mitigate that, for sure. One quick question I did have, though. What was the criteria when you, you had three different buckets? You had efficient, average, and what was the other one?
And, and that would be your household, so.
Yes, exactly.
Our waters, your water score will be compared to an average household of a similar size and similar occupancy, and then, an efficient household, what they would consider if you used all high-energy or high-efficiency products, aerators, et cetera, everything that they, they preach on conservation. So, those are the two extremes, an average household, the efficient household, and then, they compare that to you.
Yeah, yeah. And it was my, also my understanding that the citizens can continue to do like they, if they like getting the paper bill and sending in a check or whatever, they can, can, can continue to do that, but I'm not sure why someone would if you don't, if you have this tool available.
Absolutely. Yes, sir, there is multiple payment options, as always. You can always pay in person, you can pay through the portal, and you can pay through drop-off as well. So, if you choose to opt out of the program, it's, it's not a problem, you'll still get all of your standard billing. But if you plan, plan to pay online, it'll be through this portal. So, and any utility bill, even if you say you have other utilities and you're on a roll water, you will still have this portal, it'll be paid, all your other utilities will be paid on here. Paymentous is integrated into the system, so it's not going away, it's just a new customer portal that's incorporated, so.
So, as you said in our 2-2-1 meetings, that if we're already having, if it's already automatically being taken out of our account, it's, we don't have to do anything. It's going to be continued, our bill will continue to be taken out of our account.
That's correct. Auto-pay customers will transition into it without any, any hiccups. Your auto-pay will continue until your payment methods have changed. But we would, we still encourage everybody to register and get into the portal so that they can update their information and make sure that everything did transition over, so you can stay on top of your bills, so.
I do believe you can add all through your app, through your Broken Arrow app as well.
Absolutely.
You know, I just think from simple terms, it's just really a, a great tool to have. Most water leaks are just small leaks, leaking over a long period of time. Costs them a great amount of money. Say a flapper inside of a stool, you know, leaking a little bit, and you just, you don't, you don't know it.
Absolutely.
It's sat there and leak it, can run your bill up $50, $100 a month before you realize it. This is going to tell you, hey, you know, how does he know what happened to the stool? You know, you can tell by the leak what's probably leaking, you know?
Yes, sir.
Do you get money back if you spent all summer watering tomatoes and didn't get any tomatoes?
So, I'm going to defer that to Kurt Poole.
I, I do like the transparency of this, too. I was talking to Michael, you know, it seems like if, if we get hit on anything, it is our utility bill, you know, on social media. It seems like that's what they hit us the most with. And with this tool, they can tell in real time exactly what they're doing in their household. So, I love the transparency of it, too.
Yeah, it was pretty impressive, so. And I think we found one of the days that we were wondering what was going on in your house at 2:00 AM when your water.
That's it, absolutely. Helps me monitor those little boys, I tell you.
It's good to see that Kurt's hair is not green anymore, so.
That's right.
Awesome, well, this is, this is exciting. I think, I think our citizens should be very excited about this, so. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Know that there was any action on that, right?
I don't think there was. Just a presentation.
Yeah, okay. Okay, we have no general authority business. Remarks by governing body members? City Manager?
No, Madam Chair.
We have no executive session?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Yes, I am voting.
Call the Broken Arrow Economic Development Authority to order. Roll call.
Pickle?
Here.
Green? Ford?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Wimpy?
Here. Any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Can you try your motion and second again? Doesn't look like it was recorded. There we go.
We have no public hearings, appeals, presentations, recognitions, or awards, no general authority business. Any remarks from governing body members? City Manager?
Just discussion in the executive session, Madam Chair.
Okay. And we do have, we do have an executive session, and so, I may entertain a motion to clear the room for executive session.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to clear the room?
I'll have a second hit.
Roll call.
Pickle?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.